I've known the owner of the property quite a while. I'd actually consider him a friend, but a couple of weeks ago, we received a letter from him and a quote in front of a plan to close the course. And talking with him, apparently this has been something keeping the company for a while, and some folks have known about it, but this is the first we've learned about it. And I guess what I wanted to, I called up the clerk and said, "Has this been, has the council know about this? Has that discussed at all, the impacts of it?" And he mentioned the, I guess it's been a year or so ago, there was an attempt to rezone some property over there. And I said, "No, that one, I know about that. It's some, um, a country wood. I think you were wanting, he was wanting to build some of the houses there." And what I heard, they were not happy about that. And then that was stopped, but talking with, I think I have a lot of folks, Mr. Myers, he's a great guy. And he's, he's unpredecemined with this golf course, of what I've talked to him, and he's been going for a while now, losing money for various reasons. And so, he's, he can't, I guess, continue the way things are going. And so, I felt this was his only option. He's already built all the realtors about it. Like I said, he has got this preliminary little layout, nothing designed or anything like that, but I wanted to discuss it with the council, because, I mean, my, my property backs up against it, so I do have a plan that's, you know, an I V, to bring this board in. Which is one of the reasons I bought the property, was it was on, it was a golf course slot. And, and I guess from what I'm looking at, I guess all of, you know, all these, all the adjoining properties were all built after the golf course. It was there, I think it was 52 it was built. And it's been part of Perry a long time. And I always, whenever I get on a little Google map, I say, like, "Find my property, bam, there's a little golf course. You can see that basketball right there in the middle of town." And it's a beautiful property, but, yeah, so I think it's more than just a golf course, I think. I look out there, and it was, in the evenings, I see folks out there with the kids, like, comes kind of like a park, you know, this kind of strobe street walkout, see people take wedding pictures out there, it's just, it's a great, and, you know, he is, he's, a part of the later, he's offering adjoining owners to buy property, how it first did to getting a piece of property if they want to. But, and so, Eli even told me that the owner across the other side, I'm like a little corner of the southwest corner, she's already expressed interest, I feel that that was her route, and that's what happened, she would want, because she wants, she likes the stuff he does, that's like we like the stuff he does. Uh, this corner down here, it's a little park, with a little trail, which is a cart path, but it looks like a little trail, and just pretty, and the reason I bring it up is what, you know, the city, um, what they're, if there's any kind of precedent for any kind of, anything that could be done, to assist him, or to keep it in, um, in business, or the city, some kind of intervention. And matter of fact, my, my wife spoke to her, told me if you worked for Marty, and he said something to the effect, he'd need like, a hundred memberships to keep it open, something like that. Well, and I was talking with Marty, he says, when, uh, this is when he gave me the copy there, um, since he bought the, I think it was 20, he bought the property in 2015, he said, you know, at that time, that actually, it gained value as property, and that it's actually dropped in his past year. But he said, when he bought the property, the whole, that whole surrounding residential areas, residential, he only had six members, and all that there. And since he's had the property, he's gone up to 12. That's all, but those are, that's all the membership he has, from that whole section of Perry right there. And, uh, and so, he says, it's not generating enough property to keep it there. But I wanted to, you know, see first of all, if the council's aware of this, and it's not, to me, just a, you know, a landowner, because I, I work for, well, I've been, I work for a mortgage engineer, and we do subdivision, and we develop properties, and I see this, and I've actually discussed it with my boss, and he's saying that, um, right now, there's not a big demand for new built houses, because there's actually quite a few subdivisions that are, have lot lots waiting to be sold. There's empty lot of empty lots. Um, so, if, you know, this were to go forward, there's no telling how long it would actually, before it actually got, that, you know, it could be quite a year, it could be. And that's, and I don't know what kind of maintenance, or how that would work, and it would just, it's just, it's upsetting, you know, it's upsetting, the, you know, as nice as it is back there, and all the property deals, I know, I've already heard, folks are, some folks are already up and on about it, they've, they've heard, I mean, it's across the other side, closer to clubhouse, but, um, I know there's a lot of problems happening for us, going to go work, go work, anything like that. But I know that it, there is a lot of, a lot of that stuff, folks, and, uh, so I just wanted to, first of all, bring it, and mention, see if it's been mentioned, and, um, from what, from discussion, I think some folks already have heard about this happen, so, um, this is something that the city has any concern about, or anything they can do, or, I know it's some kind of odd, you say someone who owns a property is zoned for residential, and, uh, but I think it impacts the city so much, that I'm bringing that forward.
I appreciate the information, Mr. Tucker. I can tell you that three or so years ago, and I might be a little off on that, maybe it's a little longer than that, the prospect of the city buying the course, before Mr. Myers bought it, came before this council. And we, we looked at it and resoundingly said, "No." And I can't, I'm not speaking for council, but we don't want to be in the golf course business. It is not, it's not a moneymaker, we're not in that business, and that's not the purpose of the city, quite frankly. Now, it does affect the city, just as much as the sale of the New Prairie Hotel did, as, as an icon. And in fact, it's back, I understand, it's coming back on the market again, from what I've been told, um, from that standpoint. So although we, we have a concern, I have a concern, I'm not speaking for council, there's nothing we can do, uh, from that standpoint. If we are not in that business, and I would not, I would encourage council not to purchase the course, in order to preserve it as a, a golf course, or anything else, for that matter, because that's just not the business that we're in. The property is zoned R1, and, uh, Mr. Wood, has anybody approached the city for anything concerning this, yet?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you know as well as I do, there's a process that has to go, that someone would have to go through, even though it's currently zoned R1, there is a pretty lengthy process to get a subdivision approved. And, and it's done every day, even you're, you're familiar with that process. Even though no one, to my knowledge, has come, well, to the city yet, it still can happen, but that's solely dependent upon whomever owns that property, quite frankly. And I, I would hate to see that golf course closed. But by the same token, I'm not willing to put my money into it in order to prevent it. And I, and that's, that's my opinion. I don't know if council was aware, um, that this was, was coming up. I had heard rumors of it in the, in the last several weeks, from that standpoint. And I have seen that letter, and then, of course, council's had an opportunity to, to see that, that you had presented to us, from that standpoint. From the council, your thoughts?
I don't think we have any interest in it, but, property has been struggling for 15 to 20 years. And, uh, the only reason I can see anyone purchasing it would be to turn it into a subdivision. The land's very valuable, but that's it.
I guess I, when, that was one, of course, I didn't know at one time this had been thought or discussed, um, that that was the only avenue, to something like I mentioned, uh, it's been said that perhaps if you generate enough, um, interest, you know, some interest in memberships, or whatever, you could do it open, but...
That would have to be done, that's a private endeavor.
Exactly, that's where I was getting at, I didn't know how.
Somebody's private business.
If, if, I mean, there's an L area or something, so, that, basically, I was looking for was, ending young, the city would be a private endeavor.
That's right.
For somebody to, to go around, um, either Marty himself, or, um, somebody to see if they could do something, you know. I know, uh, that little, that corner down there, that, that we privately would look at somehow to keep it as a park, in this, outside, or simply create a trust or something, to buy that property, and be the, as a, you know, I don't, you know, I would, and then I'd just like, like to see it natural back there, and, you know, we have a town building, but, um, and he, I thought I discussed it, and, but he, I didn't know, I just, I didn't know, I was, that's why I came, to see what, um, what avenues it could possibly be, and I just, I mean, I just, yeah, I would be glad to, but, and just, and then, in talking with him, I know that golf courses are, are struggling right now, Mint predates, Houses Springs, um, they, they've got covenants amended, and these, as they're covered, you know, their, their courses, they're paid for, it's, it's kept up because of these, uh, that the, the folks that live there. And so, whereas, this is being private, like, like it is, it relies on generous from the public, and, um, I see, I see people playing their society, but, uh, and so, I just wanted to, an opportunity to kind of find out, you know, as a citizen, I guess, or living in an owner right next to it, um, not so much, you know, almost preserve something, I've said, but been there for a long time, and, um, feel nice to, to keep it going. I think he wants to keep you like he wants to keep mine, too, but, I understand. And now, my attempt deal wasn't to, to, you know, to make it into a system, nobody's doing, and so, we've got opportunities, and, uh, that's why I just wanted to bring it up, and appreciate you guys, um, listening to what I had to say about it.
Well, I appreciate your interest, and thank you, and if that changes any, which you got to get, possibly, again, it's a private enterprise, and there's, there's nothing that deceives, you know, or is in a position to do, from that standpoint.
So I guess if the owners, surrounding owners probably came and tried to come up with something, you know, and, and to try to save the course, I mean...
That's, that's up to y'all.
Okay.
The only, the only time we would play a part is if there's a change in utilization, if not within the R1 designation, then it would have to come before planning and zoning, for whatever that is, and we have a process for that as well, so, yes, that's, that would be between the private owner of the course, and anyone else who wishes to have a part in.
Okay. That now, because I'll, I'll discuss it, actually, with him, and say, hey, you know, I think, I personally, like talking with my wife, I'll join, I'll, I'll join if I'm all right, you know, I have no problem with that, we're moving to closing. You know, I don't play golf, and I dabble in it, but heck, I'll, you know, for what it takes, I, I'm, it would not surprise me if a fair amount of the folks around would jump right in there, but, you know, it's kind of this, but, uh, okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Richard King. Item 3B is the Leash Services Department. 3B1 is the X C brand application request. Mr. Dyke?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, um, in your database, you received a memorandum from me, and some basic information on the National Fitness Campaign grant. What I'd like to do is draw your attention to a short two-minute video that was not available in your packet there, and it does a really good job summarizing what this is before we decide.
This is why I'm here, to make the thousand whole drops a day with this. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone. Hi, I'm Mickey the Man, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign started in 1979, when we founded the fitness program. Our first new fitness course was Stanford and Zenith System. The mayor and most hard to make on the ice program. Over a period of 10 years, we opened fitness courts in 4,000 cities across America. Introducing a new fitness court for the 21st century and launching a new national fitness campaign. The fitness court will allow you to use your own body weight to get a perfect workout. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to get a full-body workout in just seven pounds. Forty-five seconds of work at each station, followed by 15 seconds of rest. The system is progressive, so people at all fitness levels can use it, easy or hard, it will work for everyone. And it's adaptable as well. You can come to the fitness court and do any workout. If you're training for a tough motor, if you're running a marathon, the fitness court will work for you. You can download our mobile app, learn our routines, and take some of the fitness challenges. This will allow you to compete on the fitness court, against your own personal times and against your friends. You can also match the music on your phone to your workouts, to make it a lot more fun. We're joining forces with FitRadio to build fitness courts in 100 cities and schools across America in 2018. FitRadio provides $10,000 for every $20,000 that we raise. Each time we do this, we open a new fitness court. Our first new fitness court has been at Marie Agreed for more than three years now. Tens of thousands of people have used it, and hundreds of people from around the country and around the world have contacted us to get them.
I think it's amazing.
I love the fact that this is here, and it's been here, it's awesome. You get to do a ton of kind of workouts here.
I'm a great spot, friends, Marina.
They come out, enjoy the views, it's a fresh air.
National Fitness Campaign is a social enterprise, and I take no salary, so all the money we raise goes directly to building fitness courts across America. We envision fitness courts joining basketball courts and tennis courts as essential elements of healthy infrastructure in cities and schools. Hook sites work with you to build fit communities. Join with us, and let's make world-class fitness free for everyone.
Now, it's not the director's intent to make everybody feel bad for Thanksgiving. From that, you can kind of see what these, you know, what a fitness court is. Nancy's going to pull up a, there we go, okay. In working with council members, Bob and Grace and King, I was looking at several different sites. We had three, and I was thinking of our, of our major parks, but Creekwood is the best fit for this kind of, of a court, simply because the old tennis court circle there is still in good enough shape, and has a good foundation. I also like the fact that there's a trailhead directly coming out of Creekwood. So if I were a workout enthusiast, and wanted to do the cardio portion, I'd go for my workout there, straight to the trail. And that's the portion that's being paved right now, that we end at the bottom of the hill, so basically, you'd have a 300-yard run down an embankment to get there. But with the splash pad, the picnic shelter, the playground renovations that we're planning on doing, this is our major sports park. We have football, softball, a lot going on there. It just all fits. It's all right there in that single apartment, okay? That's the good part. Now, I talked to, uh, the National Fitness Campaign, had a couple of conference calls with them, I've sent them this same information, as you're seeing here, a little bit more detailed, and, uh, for this year, they've got 20 slots left, we're trying to do 100, so they fill it 80. They're very influenced about what our vision is, as far as leash services, what we're doing there. But I did not want to go any further before giving it to, to council. When they, that little quick slide that showed the funding mechanism for about three seconds, uh, in your board pack, there is a more descriptive sheet about how this actually works. At a bare minimum, you're talking about city investment, $60,000, okay? That 80,000 to 90,000 is with them helping raise more money to the corporations here. That's what they would do, it would not be me or you going out and doing it, okay? But still, there's no formula to predict that. You know, we have companies and stuff around here. That part, to me, I would rather, if this was something that you're interested in, I would rather say, okay, you're looking at the $80,000 investment. And if we give a little Christmas money, great, that's awesome. Uh, the other part is that national sponsor covers 10,000, um, you know, these things, that's a $100,000 project. So, that's it in a nutshell. It's not free, and it's not one of these grant gifts, because it's, it is, when, when we receive the email, myself and Ms. Bob and Grace, it comes to you as a grant opportunity. Now, that's, it is, but it's a privatized grant. It's not like our RTP that we've gotten, and it's not like the things that you've done in the past. Um, this is more of a, like, well, like Jim says, this is more of a movement, kind of like Kaboom. I heard Kaboom Playground, we're a part of one of those. It's, it's one of those things that, that it was fit, and it would be another juvenile crime, so to speak, but, like I said, I don't, I don't want to mislead anyone in thinking that this is just one of those free grants, but it's not. There's, there's a substantial amount of capital involved, and that's why I wanted to, before you talk about this, before I go, probably, put in time.
Are there any ongoing fees back to this organization?
No, no, once, once you do this, you're done. It's not a, it's not a deal where each year, we've got to pay them to keep our registry and all that stuff. It's, it's a, it's a one-time project. Now, we would, now, maintenance and all that stuff.
That's up to us.
That's up to us.
Okay.
You've got to take care of it.
No, this is bad to say, but I always enjoy watching these commercials, because they didn't have any fat people on them.
I know.
They, they need to hire me, they'd like the commercials.
Well, and, and one of my concerns, and we talked about it before we discussed it, was, I did not want, when I say me, I, I did not want to advise council to get into the business of competing with the city. We've got four local fitness company, uh, businesses, small businesses, that, that offer a service, but that's not what, this is not weights, this is not cardio, this is outdoor calisthenics kind of stuff, that, uh, you know, that's different.
A number of years ago, you may remember seeing the, the trails.
Yes.
And you'd have these stations at each trail, and that, that, that's been going on for the last 30-something years.
Right.
And this is just a new take on that, except it's in one spot.
Exactly, exactly.
So, it, I, I don't know how, well, I guess it could be considered competing, but I, I wouldn't consider it.
No, I would not.
None of this is movable, except for the, except for the chain hook things that you hang on to, um, on that, that's, council, what do you think?
Well, you know, it's, it's my interest, uh, initially came to me, and since we, since you became mayor of this wonderful city, you started a meeting with, uh, working with mayor and council, that's a form of exercise, and I think that would just be an addition to, uh, what we already have started.
Once a quarter, we're going to have to go to this court, and replace the Walton mayor and council. So that is something you need to get on film.
That sounds good to me.
You sure you still want it?
Yeah.
She'll play the brain in there, they, they...
She's, she's...
I said, she got to be leaving first, she got to be out there, she got to be...
I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's all right. But, uh, looking at, like Kevin, looking at the areas that, that we could possibly put it in, I thought that was the best, because of the fact that, uh, tennis court was no longer usable, and that we do have so many, so much activities going on out there, and when we put in the, the new equipment for the kids, that would be one thing that moms or dads would possibly use while the kids were playing in the splash pad. So, it was desirable to me for that reason.
Yeah, me too. I mean, it's, I'm a, I'm a recreator, I'm great spending money to make fun, so, I mean, so, of course, I, and I like this, but, you know, we got a lot going on, so, we got a lot that's happening.
Anybody else?
Is this something they are doing every year?
Yes.
They have for this past, for past decades.
Is there a business?
I like the concept, like the idea. With everything else we've got going on park-wise, would we be better off to get some of that accomplished, get some synergy going, and plan on this a year or two down the road?
Well, I know this is a lot of money, but, but if we're going to do it, I'd rather it's planned for, it'd be, I'd rather it's inserted into the plan as soon as possible, and, and, but when we implement it, it's up to, to council.
That's what I'm hoping for. But the implementation, not necessarily eighteen, because you've got several other projects, major things going on at the time.
Hopefully, include it as part of phase two.
Yeah.
Great for it. But we need to make a provision for it, if, if we decide to do something.
I think that's a good concept that we can come to. Like you said, if we, we need to get it in the plan, not wait, the plan is laid over it, we can work it, we work it in the plan, as we're doing, as we said, we got other things that we've got on the table, as we finish one project, we move to the next. And I think that's a good, good thing, you know, that, since we got a lot going on, if we would, and like you said, instead of it was my own, and also look at, I think, if you were to get the new road cleared in, that would really enhance all that, isn't it? That would be a plus. What you got to say?
What do I have to say?
Yes.
Well, number one, you can say you'd like to put in your capital plan, but normally, these types of things, if you go and apply for this year, then they're expecting you're going to get started, you're going to go this year, or whatever the next year is. As far as I can tell, if we get some other corporation assistance here, then that's fine, but I'm figuring, we got to start, start at 80K. Plus, you also know something, it's 80K plus the installation going in there, and, and Mr. Watts's name graciously gives 10, you know, for this. We, just like you all have talked about, we have three major projects talking about coming to Creekwood Park. The first one is the splash pad, the second one is the new playground, Destination Playground Equipment, and the third, like we talked about, is the new access road. From my perspective, unless you want to take the money, but if you, if you go with it, then the money has to come from Geno Fund, or it has to come from SPOSS. If it comes from Geno Fund, and something else in Geno Fund's not going to be funded, but normally, we don't do that, if you take it from SPOSS, then some other recreation project gets postponed and delayed. And that could be the Destination Playground, see what I mean, it could be, you know, those type of things. I think it would be much more prudent, from the manager's standpoint, that you take it under advisement, kind of following up on Williams' thing, and then, when you get a little further along, I'm not saying until all those projects are done, but for example, once we have the splash pad done, then maybe go back and check and see, you know, where we are with that.
Sounds good. I, I can, I can accept that, because I would like to see all those other things done, too, but eventually, I would really like to see that done, too.
Yeah, I mean, concept is something to add there, I think, you all have talked about it, would be a very good idea, but, uh, just like Mr. King said, I think it'd be a very good idea after that new access drive is put in.
We have a rumor, too, we have other parks that might want some money.
Yes, that's right.
And we've got stuff going on at other parks.
And other parks, not taking from other parks.
And I can, I mean, I'll happily, I have a great meeting with these folks, I'll keep the community base lines up, but they know, they, they've got their information from me, I've got theirs, so it's not like if we choose to not go now, we can't revisit it, but it, but the manager's correct. They expect, if you go for it, they want it done now.
That's right.
Not put it down, but...
Well, accept it under advisement, and put it in the concept plan, for, for future development.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That work?
And we're pretty done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item C is under administration. C1 is considered transporting animals from the peri-animal shelter. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, in your board pack, you have a memo from me dated November 15th, talking about an issue that has been discussed, there may or may not be people here tomorrow meeting to talk about this aspect, but on the adoption process and the transporting of animals that are under the, our care. You may remember with the amended animal retention policy, for the first seven days, they're city animals, and we just hold on to them, and after that, they are available to be adopted, and whoever wants to adopt them would have to come and get them. In the past, there's been a, a good collaboration between FOPAS, for example, and the city, where the animals would be taken to PetSmart, or they'd be taken to MENT to be prepared for adoption. The administration's recommendation to you would be that we could, uh, have that process still continue, subject to, uh, that the organization is the responsible party for the animals, and will be liable for any issues that may develop when they have the animals in their care. The second is that the organization agrees to hold the city harmless for any of its agents' actions, and three, that it would be responsible for all transportation, in other words, to prove that, um, getting the animal, take it, or whatever they're going to do. And if we're talking about the medical transport, then that organization is solely responsible And if we're talking about the medical transport, then that organization is solely responsible for those medical costs, which you may remember we've talked about, you know, before. If we can get an agreement with that, for example, with FOPAS, then I think that that would be doable. Currently, or what has historically been used is an agreement, well, the agreement says is that the FOPA agents won't sue the city, you know, for the transport of the animal. So, therefore, we would still have the liability since they're our animal if something happens. For example, take animal or PetSmart, something, here takes animal, whatever, the animal takes off, likes somebody, you know, all that kind of stuff, that liability would come back to us as it stands right now. The other thing that you have said with the policy, which I think is absolutely correct, is that the city of Perry strongly supports adoption, but it is not in the adoption business. So, if you all would be interested in this, we could prepare your general agreement and adapt to whatever interest your groups are and then see what happens. Or if you don't want to get into it all, then we will advise whoever may ask.
We'll do it, me too, to a point, I know, I understand what you're saying, but at the city.
I think, I think it would be a good gesture from the city to say, yes, we will allow this to participate, subject to the agreement. So, then if the organization, it's a legal organization, okay, or I guess potentially even an individual, and they sign the agreement, they abide by those type of conditions, then we're covered and that's fine. If there isn't anyone who is interested in doing that, you all have made that effort, but you still protected the taxpayers' interest.
That's what it makes sense.
That's fine. The consensus is to move forward under these conditions.
Okay.
Item 3C2, city employees on boards, et cetera. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your board pack is a memo from me talking about a topic that has not come up before. I'm not aware necessarily whether there's anything right now with that either, but reviewing our personnel policy, it does not say anything relative to city employees participating or being on any of the either joint or solely mayor council-appointed boards, for example, the planning commission, or the airport board, or some organization like that. But it could be something that comes up, so always trying to be proactive from the administration's standpoint, we would like to get some type of determination from you if you would be interested in doing that. If you would, I have a couple of things to point out. First one is would the employee be qualified to serve based on residency, education, et cetera? In other words, if just because you're an employee, could you be considered to be appointed? Okay? And that could be a problem, for example, on the planning commission, if we require residency in the planning commission. Second is there a conflict between the employee's job or career track and the organization's function? In other words, you could have an employee, if you decide to do this, that is appointed to that, initially their job has no conflict with the board they're on, and they go through the career track and then you wind up, everybody would think you're having a potential, a problem there. The other big item would be how would you address selection if a number of employees aren't interested to go and serve? Is there a conflict for serving and the city having to pay the employee's rate when serving? Some of you all may remember, this is an issue we had to go back with the IRS open record edition. You know that if it's a city employee and if there's some type of city-related function, then we may have to pay them. So, that could, in other words, translate into overtime to pay the employee, plus the other members, for example, if it's on the public facilities authority, they serve without pay. And if you have employee on there, then the employee would be making money. Probably, at least from my perspective, the most important point on that would be what would be the citizens or prospective benefactors of the authorities' perspective of council's appointing city employees placed on these governing boards? I think that's a very major issue that you need to take into account. I would, you want to try and avoid, I would think, stacking any of these groups with employees, well, how far did you go? Could there be concerns from the people that are served or whatever about doing that? And then also, could the appointment cause a conflict between employees? Well, you know, I wasn't, you know, going back, how you make this, well, I wasn't selected because, everybody went in and you just go through. Some of the boards we have, for example, do have certain type of criteria or expectations. Others are oriented just to have citizen input, and primarily citizens from the cities' input to guide you and provide you advice on this.
Do we have a policy of own, can it be, are there something more to create? Like I allow, the actual question, considering for a week, you on the board? So, have we asked for the board before?
No.
Okay. Are we gonna create a policy, I just want you to hang it up, do you want to create a policy at this point to allow city board to go on certain board if they qualify?
Well, I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
Okay, the manager's recommendation is no, you know, for the reasons that are laid out here, you don't, you don't do that. Because I think it's not that there would be anything wrong with a particular employee's skills. I mean, that could be a very fine, perfect person, but as I've laid out here, there are too many other issues, I think, that can cause you problems as time goes on. You know, for example, well, I wasn't selected because I was an Eskimo woman.
On you.
Yeah, well, yes, you are, but no, you weren't selected because we felt that, you know, this other woman was more qualified. Well, yeah, but that other woman also is an employee who lives outside the city and I'm a city resident. See what I mean? And you just have, you know, I think just all kinds of, you know, problems with that. The other deal's about to pay, you know, issue, that could be a real problem.
Pay issues. Because we'll lose any challenge if we did have, well, first of all, to be qualified to serve on these boards, authorities, commissions, each board, authority, commission has its own qualified things. So, if we had someone who fell into those categories and already, that's not our decision anyway, well, for the most part. But being a city employee and then getting appointed by the same body to serve on anything is gonna constitute part of their duties. And I think, now, that's a legal issue, Mr. Hoben, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we would lose a challenge if we tried not to pay them for that if it came up, I think. I've seen that happen in other organizations who have lost. So, I think that's as major an issue as anything else. And this has nothing to do with the employees, about their caliber or their qualifications or even their desire to serve. But I think it would be a mistake if we didn't have a policy prohibiting it. For a lot of various reasons, none of the least of which is some could be legal, and not in every case from that standpoint, but I think Mr. Gilmore brings up some good points.
And I'm gonna remember that, I don't think we need to go, there create a lot of the problem, we probably did it going, create all kinds of problems, you know, we're gonna start something that, I tell you, we don't need you. That's my opinion. I don't think we need to go that way.
Well, and you need to remember that anybody can challenge.
Well, they're policies, that's right.
And it'll be up to council, I want to need to, as needed basis, but for the most part, I think it would behoove us to come up with something.
Something for, not having a something for, I think it's part, do have.
Not, we need a policy that addresses.
Says no.
That says no.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it up.
Trying to, I'm trying to avoid having negative policies.
But you're right, because we'll get challenged. If we get challenged, they think we take it out, you know what I mean? And that's not what we want, you know what I mean? Okay, we'll meet you.
What I'll do then is we'll prepare something for you for tomorrow's meeting, you know, it's our resolution that just sent this package. Mr. Knight?
I'm fully agree that they don't need to go.
Anything further?
Yes, sir.
Item Q, item 3C3 is the 2018 council calendar. Trying to remember now, since this is me. We need to address the 2018 calendar, and by that I mean several, there are several Monday holidays that we typically don't meet on work sessions, et cetera. And then you get into, looking at the calendar year, then we have another fiscal year, what happens like the week of Thanksgiving that we're in right now, and of course, we're gonna meet. Unless there's a viable reason not to, then I fully intend on, I think we ought to have a meeting, but we need to look at the calendar to see if there's gonna be any conflicts for the calendar year 2018, and that's the reason it's on here. And the reason it's on here is what I'd like for you all to do is to make sure you bring your calendars to the next work session so that we can have this discussion and see, you know, when the dates fall and if there, and add, look, just to make sure there's not any potential conflicts in 2018.
Bit of email.
Yes. But that's why it's on here, I think it behooves us to spend a few minutes to look at the calendar for the whole year.
Sometimes even GMA has far.
Right. And we'll do our best to get those dates as well, of what we already know that this is gonna happen in 2018, just to make sure, I think we all look at that.
I know, we're gonna do it.
Next work session. Thank you. Item 3C4 is a discussion of the Perry Housing Authority appointment. You've got the memo here, and I've asked Ms. Warren to put on the agenda, and you'll see it on there tomorrow night, and just to have a note that it's just gonna appear on the agenda until it's filled, from that standpoint. But we do need to look at a replacement for Mr. Wolf, who has resigned as of the end of the year. And I think we had talked about this earlier, if y'all have any suggestions, there I have spoken to. Mr. Beckham, Ed Beckham, I can see his face, couldn't call his name, it's one of those age things. Last week, and we had, wanted to know if council had any people that they were interested in serving. They have someone in mind, from that standpoint, but they wanted to see if anybody had anybody else. If that makes any sense, so the reason's on there, if you have someone in mind, please let me know within the next couple of days, so we can go ahead and get this appointment. We have some time, in the next week or so.
If not, they got somebody.
They have someone in mind, yes, they do. But by the same token, if there's a member of council who has someone else in mind that wishes to serve and is qualified, then we need to make sure we do it, okay? If you have any questions about that, please call me. 3C5 is the Walton Mayor Council in District Two on November the 28th. You may see that we have already, you've already received information about a District Two town hall meeting that was scheduled for January the 30th at 5:30 PM at Mount Arthur Elementary School, and that was done, my understanding is because that's the time that we can get in the school, from that standpoint. So, that was, this is, I think it's District Two's turn for the month of November, so what I would like to let you know is that we're gonna have a District Two walk anyway, and we'll have to adjust the schedule accordingly, it's gonna be in Lake Forest subdivision on November 28th at 5:30. Okay? Questions? That's gonna look a little odd because we're gonna have District Two, and then again in January, and that's gonna throw the system off a little bit, we'll just adjust as necessary. I wanted to tell you why, that was done that way.
Get it up here, 5:30.
Why are we moving this time? It's 5:45. Y'all wanna back it up to five?
I just brought that up, so.
I agree with you.
Let you know.
Y'all wanna back it up to five? If we don't, we're gonna finish this thing in the dark.
I haven't said a thing.
Ain't got no problem with it, but you know.
She's pondered that rain of snow already.
Or headlights.
I just had to give you a flight, make that known.
Now, seriously, you wanna move back up to five? Is that gonna?
Five.
Okay. Let's, we're gonna have it on November 28th, if you would like a note, let's back it up to five, please, and modify that. Thank you. 3C6, we have a public problems democratic decisions by council members Vina Grayson and King.
Hold on, may we? Next one.
If y'all want it next time, it can be next time.
Well, will you just pull it, because what I have called for is the rest of the information from the past, and I have not received it this year.
Please postpone this until the next work session. Thank you. Yeah, that was easy. Item 3C7, amending the city's assistant program. Mr. Gilmore, assistance.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we have a senior disabled financial assistance program with certain criteria. As you may remember, that covers, pays for those persons who qualify, their stormwater fee and sanitation, all of which are fixed costs. Going back and taking a look at it, the administration recommends to you that we also add for those persons who qualify, the base fee charges for water and sewer and gas, if they are a gas customer, because those are also fixed as well. For the same basis on why you provided, you're waiting for the fire fee enough, no water fee. We do not want to get into a deal about any credits or anything based on consumption because that becomes too much of a problem.
So, I'll stay with that. In current, the council will proceed. Okay. Item Q, item 3C8 is an update on the jointly owned natural gas capital expansion. Like y'all may remember, then, there was a, last Wednesday was an update for jointly owned natural gas. I'm gonna turn on one row of these lights so we can somewhat see this. And you have this information in your packets. Jointly owned natural gas is expanding, that's very difficult to see, but if you look at, right there is what's called a Bass Road Junction, and there's a red line that comes down this way, all the way down, and comes back up over here to what's called a Monrose Station. That is, that entire line is where jointly owned natural gas has for gas distribution. Y'all may remember that jointly owned natural gas is owned by cities of Warner Robins, Cochran, Byron, Perry, Hawkinsville, there are five of us. And remember, last time we did that, a little over a year, about a year and a half ago, we needed to borrow some money in order to do some upgrades and stuff, and we have done that. What we have found now is that with the expansion of Perry and Hollyworth and Bose and Hawkinsville is having a major expansion, which will require more gas, and they are the number one user of gas in Hawkinsville, over there in Cochran, doesn't have anybody on the drawing board right now, but they're still in this line. The majority of the gas that's used comes from Bass Road Junction up here, and it comes down, and I can't see, somewhere right in there, there's a little bitty road that goes over to Sofki Industrial Park in Macon. That serves Tumo type, and they are a major user of gas, and they're building in phases, from that standpoint. And then the line comes down from there to the city, Warner Robins and Perry and Byron. And then it makes that bottom loop. What we have determined is that with, and with the information that you have, there are numerous. opportunities, if you will. Can you go to the next? Next page, please. Okay. Because of those opportunities. Red X. Red X. Thank you. I'll leave it alone. Let me walk over here then. I'll do the old fashioned way, just point. This is a graphical representation of the gas line. This is the Montrose Tap and this is called the Bass Road Junction Tap. The Bass Road Junction Tap taps into a major gas line that is supplied, I think by Trimco or Tempco. It doesn't matter. This line right here is six inches. It comes down to where it shoots off and goes over to Sofki Industrial Park. We cannot expand, can't take any more gas in our line, in the entire line now. We have enough capacity to service our existing customers, which includes all five cities and then those industrial base that jointly owned also serves. The proposal is to increase the system because the city Perry has already asked for more gas. Because of what we know, we've got coming with Sandler, their Phase Two is going to come online. And you remember, I told y'all before, the city Perry's gas line comes in, the regulator station is on Bear Branch Road. That's where it comes into the city. And that line is a two inch line from Bear Branch Road, comes all the way down and loops around to the industrial park. And it serves the rest of the city as well. But that's where it comes, it's about eight miles. And at some point, we're going to have to increase that line in order to serve the industrial commercial capacity for the city Perry in order to grow more. Even if we were to do that, we can't, we can't do it jointly owned because there's not enough pressure coming in order to serve it. Now, this is fine and this is what's going to backfill to help. Medusa is right in here, the cement companies. And that's the major line there. And that comes, that also serves the industrial park that's behind Pretty Chicken, y'all may remember. And that's on the Houston County Industrial Development Authority's list to serve a major commercial and industrial prospects as they come. And Mr. Wayne James is the executive director of jointly owned natural gas. He's already looked at several different RFPs regarding prospects. And that comes, just like everything else, they have prospects coming the whole time. But in order to, for us to position ourselves and us being jointly owned natural gas, of which we are a part owner, there is a proposal for a significant increase, a capital expansion. It's in red. And that basically means we're going to create a brand new eight inch line from this point all the way down to this point. And then there's another one from here to here in order to handle the capacity. That'll also require us to increase the junction at Bass Road. You may remember, we talked about having to do that last time and made the determination that jointly owned, but it wasn't necessary. At that time, it's going to cost a million dollars, just to, you remember, we talked about that. Just to increase that regulator station in order to handle the gas. This is going to require. Coming through here. It's about 22 miles, maybe something like that. I forgot exactly how far it is. Part of that's going through a swamp. 3,000 feet of it. And you'll see the detail in one of these next slides. It's very expensive. It's $300 a foot to bore under the swamp. And these companies do this all the time. There's a lot of the stuff that engineering goes into it. And each one of these boxes is basically, bridge to me, the engineer did this, but what he's done is showing what the capacity would be, assuming we made these capital improvements. Okay? If we do this right here, then that's going to give jointly owned natural gas the ability to handle the current gas needs, the future gas needs, not only for Kumho Tire, but for Irving Paper that is coming. And others, there are several others that you see in there that they're contemplating providing gas for. Now, the next slide, please. You will see here, and it's small on purpose, not really. You got it in your plan, and I often do this for memory because I can't read it either. The first section up there shows that included the eight inch main and the purchase of materials, the pipe. Increase that, please. Can you hit the plus button? Are we going to read it? Do it again. Okay. You can see some of that breakdown and how expensive it is to do. And that's 11 million, what, 1? 135. That's the parallel main from Bass Road to Jones Road with an eight inch steel main. And then move up the page a little bit, please. And then going from Jones Road to the Houston Road with an eight inch. That's that little bitty leg that cuts off to the right I showed you. That goes over to Sofki. That's going to cost a million. Something? Million one. And then keep going up. The upgrade to the station at I-75 is going to be another million two. The total's 13,400. It's going to cost about 14 million dollars roughly in order to do this. Let me put this in perspective. And this is what, the way, I guess you need to look at it. You're either in the gas business or you're not. It's just like the city of Perry being in the water business. We're spending 7.3 million dollars that we just got the loan approved for with Jifa in order to install a new water treatment plant, drill two new wells, in order to ensure that we have the capacity today for our residential, commercial and industrial customers and the capacity to grow tomorrow. It's going to last a very long time. This is very similar to that. We really don't have a choice from this standpoint. Well, actually, we do. We can decide to get out of the gas business, but we can stay in it and we stay in it. This is what's been determined, this needed in order to grow. Now, if you assume that all five cities approve this, this is just like the last city. The city Perry is a joint owner with the other five cities. We own 15.97%. And I sent y'all an email today from Mr. James of jointly owned natural gas. Any obligations that we have going forward is going to be limited to 15.97%. I didn't say that right. Yeah. 15.97%. Just like the last time we did this. In this particular instance, y'all will remember that MGAG, or the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, are the people who actually provide the gas that goes in these pipes for us and 70 other cities, member cities for the state of Georgia. They can get the gas, but they can only get gas to go in the pipe if the pipe can handle it. And there's two ways to increase gas to a customer. You can either do it by volume or you can do it by pressure. We can't go any further with either one of those with our current system. Much, we can't grow anymore. But that's the bottom line. We just can't grow anymore. You need to remember that these pipelines, even though it comes through the city Perry, the city Perry is limited based on what our current capacity lines are and on the amount of gas that can come through that. And that's a different discussion we can have. We're probably a couple of years away from that. But I've been telling you, we need to keep that in mind for future developments. But back to this one. This is what we're looking at. The city of Warner Robins owns 40.16%. Hawkinsville is 17.35%, Byron's 8.49% and Cochran's 18.03%. Those are the percent ownerships and it adds up to 100. The deal only works if everybody participates. It's, this deal was put, talking about how long things have been in place. The jointly owned natural gas loose partnership, if you will, was formed in the early 50s. Strictly as a way to get gas to the member cities. And that's when all of this started. Well, it has evolved into an enterprise, just like we have a water and a water sewer enterprise fund. The gas is also an enterprise for us, but we happen to be part of a larger utility called jointly owned natural gas. So this enterprise serves more than just the five cities. Now, having said that, the five cities' contracts for gas for our customers, residential, industrial, commercial, are guaranteed protected first before any of the other jointly owned enterprise, commercial, industrial and some residential is served. Those contracts are through MGAG as they have been for years. That will continue. That will continue. MGAG has also offered to jointly owned natural gas, the five cities, for them to offer a bond issue for 25 years. And that 25 year bond issue would be, depends on how we go. It's just right now, it's a little over 3%. The cost of that bond issue is about $200,000. But one of the benefits and a major benefit for having MGAG issue the bond is backed by the five cities with limited liability is that we do it one time. You may remember that when jointly owned borrowed that million dollars, by the way, they borrowed 1 million dollars, what, a little over a year ago? About a year ago, Mr. Gilmore? The balance of that loan is now down to just under 700,000. So, and it doesn't affect the city's reimbursements for gas from that standpoint. You may remember that when we did that, that million dollar loan, it was for a period of, I forgot, four or five years now on the repayment. But every single year, each of the five cities has to come back to each of their councils or commissions and reapprove the next year's debt repayment for jointly owned to whichever bank has it. And in this case, it's the Sanos or one of those banks. So we're going to have to do that again until that loan's paid off. Well, we can go the bank route if jointly owned decides to do that for the next 25 years and that's really not tenable. So going the bond issue would be a better route to go if we were to decide to do that. Now, you've got a couple of other pages in here. Go to the next slide, please. Okay. This is intended to show you currently roughly what we're doing. Our current industrial usage is, shows about 774,000. The daily is 21, 22 and the monthly is 64. The confirmed additional usage, and these are MCFs, is 2.96 million. Now, that's with the advent of the additional loads, if you will. And then you've got the combined confirmed usage of 3.7 and then the likely of another 2.19 and the grand total of 3.9. Go to the next page, please. And you've got another one for, this breaks it out a different way. The anticipated capital is 14 million. The interest rate's 3.2 for 25 years. It will cost 814,000 dollars a year to pay it back. The repayment scenario from just from Urban would be enough to do it. Amazon is another one that's coming and then there's an unnamed one that's coming as well for 21. That doesn't count what we're already throwing off for.
Doesn't count residential growth or commercial.
Or commercial growth. These are, and you've got this in your packet. These are some different opportunities that we have. The Amazon fulfillment centers of a million square foot. The Byron Industrial Park is one, Hollingsworth and Bose is significantly increasing their load. Houston County Development Authority has two sites I've already talked about. The I-75 Business Park is the one that's currently has FedEx, Tractor Supply, Gant's Brother Caterpillar, you know what I'm talking about right there? Sardis Church Road, jointly owned supplies of gas there, Irving Paper Products. And there's some more on the second page to that. Kumho Tire, there's a medical waste facility, RFV is out there. The city of Perry has asked about increasing the distribution to a greater pressure than we currently have. Sofki Industrial Park already has some more space, but the space that's still left in Sofki is not large enough for another Irving Paper or Kumho Tire, but it is still space there for smaller companies to come in and we would provide the gas for them as well. And then the city of Warner Robins with the joint development for the authority of Peach County in the joint venture is looking to properly available as well. And there's a twelfth one and I, this is an old list and I forgot what it was. William Wiggan was there. But at any rate, these are some of the the different opportunities that we have. What I wanted to do is, and we have the MGAG people, if you want to have them back down here, I can do that. But I wanted to give you an idea of where we are under jointly owned. But we're at a critical crossroads as most systems get from that standpoint. Now, assuming we did this, we as the city of Perry, then, and also assuming that we elect to go the bond issue route, which makes more sense right now because you only do it one time and then it's in place for the next 25 years. And this particular bond is not callable until the 10th year, which means you can't pay it off early. But we would have enough capital just from the existing businesses we know are coming, at least in Phase One. The Phase Two of Irving Paper, we wouldn't have to do anything else except provide more gas. We will have already put in the necessary infrastructure in order to handle their Phase Two, to handle and anything else that might come down the road from Kumho Tire. They have two or three and then.
And these figures don't take into account Phase Twos on anybody.
That's right.
They're just Phase Ones that they more than paid for.
That's correct. They more, they're basically, it breaks even from that standpoint. And then after year 10 on this 25 year bond, if we wanted to, and the profit, the excess revenue over expenses were there and they will be, then we can accelerate the repayment of this particular bond. And that's the way it would be scheduled. In any case, the city Perry would not be liable for more than 15.97% of the toll. A little over 2 million, so. Now, as Ms. King, as far as what I had told, as far as our city Perry's bonding capacity. Anytime you take on debt, then that affects the city's bonding capacity and our bond rating. This does not affect our cap at all. However, it will be noted in the footnotes to the, to our financial statements, if we go through with this, what our percentage is and the details of the deal as a contingent liability. And it's like everything else, the only way we would ever be called on for this is if the entire system failed or something catastrophic happened, et cetera, et cetera. So I've given you the good, the bad, the ugly from that standpoint. Do y'all have any questions? Mr. Jackson was there? Did I miss anything?
No, and instead of anything catastrophic happening, also be aware that there are two entry points.
That's right. That's why.
So if you get a breakage or something happens midway, you don't lose everything.
That's why you have two entry points. Now, I'm glad you brought that up. The Bass Junction, the Bass Road Junction at the top, you remember that, that V? Well, is the larger of the tap, if you will. And that's why the eight inch is going up there in order to backfill now. The Montrose Station still has gas and it's serviced by a six inch line to Cochran. And then it goes to four inch coming back down to us. If we really took off, then we would have to look at increasing that. But it's like 10 miles further to come off the Montrose Tap to do this, to get the gas back where we needed it.
And the capacity availability is not as good at Montrose Station as the I-75 Station. Also, though, you've got the possibility, you're only bringing that new eight inch nut line down so far.
Right.
If something else major came on further down, you could extend that.
That's true. You can do that. The Montrose Station gets gas from Southern Natural. The Bass Road Junction gets it from a different supplier. And I forgive me, this is clinical, I think. But at any rate, they're two reputable gas companies. But based on what else is on that Southern Natural line is why we want to go up here to the north side. Either way, it will, it will handle current anticipated and future growth for gas needs when the city Perry is there for cities and the enterprise. for cities and the enterprises known as jointly-owned natural gas. Questions? Here's the other deal. Because of commitments, if you will, in order to provide gas, jointly-owned needs to have this done pretty much as soon as possible. Based on the industrial needs of 2019, the spring of 2019 is the target date. It'll take three months just to do the engineering work for this, and they've already started from that standpoint. In order to provide the gas and increase the system without interruption, and by the way, there will not be an interruption in service to anybody while this is going on from that standpoint. Have I missed anything?
No.
We are being asked to contemplate this and make a decision by mid-January or soon from that standpoint. So having said all of that, this is for, please take this under advisement. If you have any questions, thoughts, concerns, I'd be glad to bring, get anybody from jointly-owned or MGAG or anybody else, Mr. Rusty Huff, you may remember, can come. Mr. Chris Striplhoff is with MGAG. He'll be glad to come down and explain these things in so much detail your eyes will bathe over in the first 30 seconds. But we have the experts there in order to do that and make sure that not only are we protected, all of these agreements have to go through the attorneys of every city, just like we did last time. So we're gonna make sure that not only are our interests protected, but the capacity for the provision of natural gas for the citizens of Perry and commercial industrial prospects and others will also be protected, and we will also participate in any excess revenues generated by this to the point of our investment moving forward as well.
Which will eventually happen.
It will happen. That's correct. The phase two for Urban Paper is anticipated to be three to five years after completion of phase one. So it's probably gonna be six-ish years or so down the road, but it's on. If, like I said, once they go into phase two, there are no more capital requirements for us to do. We'll just turn this thinking on a little bit.
This hasn't even taken into account any future industrial growth that we don't know about, that hasn't happened yet.
Correct. But if we don't do this, we're not gonna be able to handle it.
We'll be able to handle it.
Questions?
There was a lot of questions asked at the meeting, and I think answered well. To me, it comes down to no matter what, right? That's what I'm gonna say there. I think there's a goal for us, we need to go, in my question, whether, I guess we need to have all the council members on the panel.
And I'd be glad to do it again, if y'all want me to. I'm gonna get with the council members who are not here for their own private lessons, so y'all won't have to sit through it.
I think you did it very well, and let's come by it too. We don't have to have nobody come explain to us, I think you did very well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilmore, do you have anything to add?
Sure.
Anybody else? Mr. Jackson, anything? Okay. Well, thank y'all for your interest, and y'all can wake up at night. We're done. I did try to pay attention when I go to these meetings. All right. Okay. Item 3D is the Community Development Department. 3D1 is considering adding an additional building inspector position, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Let me say Tracy Hester is here as well to add his input. As we talked to you about during the budget cycle earlier this year, we indicated that we're getting close to that point of number of inspections and so forth, where we may come back to you to look at an additional building inspector. And we're at that point. The number of permits that we continue to issue, the number of inspections are increasing. The timeframe that Mr. Bass is spending on those inspections is getting less and less. We need to be in a position to protect the public and do adequate inspections to ensure that these houses and other properties are being built correctly. The timeframe for driving from inspection to inspection is increasing, therefore cutting out of time during the day. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And Tracy may want to add some additional information, but we're at the point where we need to be, we need to be considered in this new position.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any related to the scheduling or the actual numbers. I think in your fact, did you actually have what the write-up that I gave Mr. Wood a month or so ago, and those numbers have changed considerably since then, so it's only gotten better as far as development's concerned.
But one thing I want to ask you, that you foresee that it's gonna continue to increase, so that's what you're telling us, right?
Yes, sir. I don't see, I don't see this pulling back. We certainly, we could certainly take a look at some type of timeframe for an inspector position if we needed to, if that was a concern. But we're continuing, this should be the slowing down period for permits. And I think Chris pulled up those numbers today, and it's not any slower.
Just as a quick example, in 2014, you did 190 residential permits. 2015, 253. 2016, 256. And as of today, it's 279 year to date. So there's already considerable increase there in the workload and travel time, those kind of things that's written in the report. It only gonna get worse and better if we don't do something with it. And my biggest concern is certainly public safety, life safety issue to the inspections that we do. These are minimum codes that we are addressing each and every day, so even less than that is a jeopardy to any business owner, homeowner, and the people that they serve.
Oh, and ultimately, it comes back to the city being liable for not following through with this responsibility.
And that's residential growth, but commercial growth is doing the same thing.
It's increasing. I did not pull that out, but that's such a small number relative to this, but yes, sir, it's an increase too. Of course, just as the presentation was made about the increase in gas, we're giving that in all your utilities, which falls under us, or some portions of that for inspections as well. So again, the numbers just continue to increase. One person's just not getting it done. Now, I've taken a lot of time, reviewed the way we've done to do our processes for inspections. We've cut, we've been able to shorten that process some. I've taken on some of that duty myself while still trying to create some policies that'll help us long run. That's a temporary fix. Ultimately, it's gonna take another body to do that.
I think it will need, like you were saying earlier, that we would have, we need someone to review the project. Because I was contracted on this, you know what I mean, because I don't cut no corners. Because ever since I moved to my house, I find that there was a corner cut outside. Somebody on top of it could eliminate that, you know what I mean? And I think it's well needed that we do have another inspector to make sure that you're on to the site to see what the contractor is doing and make sure that everything is according to a plan and it's going into the building that he's dealing up for the customer. For the customer, he might not know about it till two or three years later when he runs into a problem, and you know. So I think we need to be.
If I may, that's kind of the thought process I have when I do this. Certainly, that contractor that comes in is my first-line customer, but at the end of the day, it's the homeowner or the business owner that's having to provide a service that's really protecting the public. Again, the contractors are gonna fuss about some of the things that we're doing in the process, but it's all a minimum standard, and our attempt is to just make that as a life safety, public safety issue that we can, we can feel good about at the end of the day. And as far as the timing, certainly that's a budget issue, but the sooner that we can get someone in here, especially as the holidays come in, if we're able to have somebody in first of the year so that we have a training time once development rounds back up, March, April kind of timeframe, we'd have this person trained and ready to hit the street.
Questions, Council?
How much do you expect to cost?
Well, I guess that's kind of relative, depends on what we go after. If we go sort of to a low-end inspector, somebody that's a trainee that I can just use selectively and trainees would go in, certainly that number is established in the budget already. I think the low-end's high 30s, mid guys, mid 40s. Someone of Dan's expertise and that sort of thing's gonna be in the 50s. But here again, there is a need out there for this to provide that safety factor to the community, so.
Which one of you is your need?
I like.
34 or 5?
I like the mid-range at this point. I don't think we need another Dan at this moment. I'd like to be able to train that person, and the way I like to see it done versus the way it's been done in the past. Because that's what I'm hearing from a lot of contractors, why are we doing this? We've never done this before. Well, there is reason for that.
But your write-up says a salary between 45 and 48 for an inspector one is what you recommend.
That's the minimum, yes, sir. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Gilmore, can this be? Can we amend the budget under funds available to handle this before we deploy? 19th of January.
Yeah, I'd like to amend, you authorize it tomorrow. You have the position to go because you have the issue about the alternate users and all that type of stuff. But as you well know, you'll start hearing it from the builders and contractors right off the bat when they're having the deliveries.
No, no concern too, depending on one person, something.
Whatever. Then you're really in trouble.
And that's kind of another point that's in my write-up too, is I just, we're putting a lot of pressure on one individual to be out there, that the expedience he had, he's having to do some of this stuff. We're setting him up to put himself in a position to have an accident or get hurt walking on the job because of just the speed that he has to do this.
I don't want to stretch my.
But he's there.
We don't want to be there.
Council? Incurrence to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Make sure this is only a general vote for. Mr. Wood? Thank you. Tracy Wood? Mr. Wood, you have item two?
Yes, and leading, building on that discussion, take one, ask one. In looking at the inspection process, Tracy's also been looking at the permit review process. And I wanted to just give you kind of a heads-up of some of the concerns that he's been seeing with the amount of information, the type of information that we've in the past allowed to be submitted for a permit, and part of that directly results in additional time in the inspection process. So what Tracy has, we've put together, Tracy has kind of pulled this information based on what he's seen so far in his community here, is us requesting the development community to additional items beginning January 1. We've already started putting this information out there, so it's not going to be a surprise to them. But Tracy sees a lot of issues that can be addressed upfront in the process before permits issued rather than having to deal with it after the fact. And so this is a list of what we've been asking for, or will be asking for, really more clarification of details. The new item that we're requesting is a site plan, and that doesn't have to be anything that's drawn to scale as long as we can understand it has dimensions on it. But essentially, some of the issues that we've seen is a house that was built too close to the property line. We don't know if that was approved that way or not, the process isn't a site plan, if there wasn't a site plan required. If that had been an easement, we would never caught it. So some of these things are, again, a little bit more time, maybe a little more money, but I doubt that it's gonna be substantial to get information upfront so that we and the builder can understand what the requirements are and make sure that they're compliant with the codes. So I know that the mayor had gotten a call or had gotten a comment from one of the builders about some additional requirements. I want to make sure that everybody was aware that these are taking place. And again, it's to prevent issues down the road that we can address upfront. One other thing that's not on this list that I'll let you know about, that will be coming before you with the zoning ordinance update, with the planning commission agreed to, for them to get out of the final plat approval process and to delegate that to staff. We're the ones who are reviewing the, doing all the inspections to verify that the streets and utilities and so forth are installed properly. They're really just taking out a word and approving those final plats and signing them. So as of January 1, I'm sending you the documents. That will only make some time that's currently kind of wasted waiting for a planning commission, from my perspective. So there's some give and take on both sides. I'll be happy, and Tracy will be happy to answer any questions about these.
Let me simplify this, and in my mind, we go through an awful lot of work, if you will, getting a subdivision approved, and they do that very well. Once that, you need to remember, once that subdivision's approved, that's it. Somebody comes in, pulls a lot of, a lot of 17 with XYZ subdivision, and they pay their fee, they turn their plans in, and y'all say, yeah, that looks good, and you go on, and we go out and we start. Inspector, there's nothing between the approval of the subdivision and the permit, or when the foundation's laid, that says, okay, they actually put the house where it's supposed to be outside of any built setback lines, and now it's supposed to show it. But that's what they're asking for, is a kind of a site plan from that standpoint. I can tell you two different occasions, right now, where a house was built and the corner of the house literally goes over the gas line, coming through the subdivision and the easement, the builder claims they never knew it was there, and the house has been there a while from that standpoint. And we decided to move it, not us, but it happens. It happens now. They're not gonna like it. No builder's gonna like anything extra that they happen to do from that standpoint. But because we're not asking for architectural plans, and it's just a site plan like they've got back here, this will, this will help moving forward. Some significant problems, and it doesn't take one or two, and then we got some issues from that standpoint. So I'm, now have I stated anything incorrect?
That's true, that's true.
That's perfect. And there's those you're in town, only been here five months, and I've caught two that can be major, major cost to the city if it had been constructed on our easements or our utilities in some cases. And the only way we found those is I started digging in the actual subdivision because the information was not provided to me. And that's what we're asking for here, just the information's on the original plat. The builder should have that, he should be able to provide that to us. It's a simple review by myself from Mr. Wood, five minutes, we're not taking days to do this. They're so used to walking in with this all these years, which you can't read, I can't. Maybe some of y'all's eyes are young enough to see this. There's nothing on here that helps me review from a code standpoint. So all I'm asking for is a little better review of this, and for them to provide us a site plan with the necessary information of that particular lot so that we can verify setbacks and easements and rightaways of utility locations that are causing problems. Don't see it as a major cost affecting the builder, sure, there's gonna be some because they're gonna have to provide me some pretty little pictures now, but other than that, that's about the extent of it.
But I think in the long run, it's probably a cost saver and a time saver for the developer or builder thing. You run into situations where you tell people they have to change a door because it doesn't block, or this window's got to be replaced because it's not safety glass. because it doesn't block, or this window's got to be replaced because it's not safety glass and bathroom. So, those things could have been called up front and saved the builder time of ordering that particular part, putting it in, and then finding out after the fact that it's got to be changed. So, there's a little more upfront, but in the long run, I think it's going to be a benefit to everybody.
And the last thing I'd like to say, this is actually another way to assist the inspector so that he doesn't have to do this in the field. I'm able to review that, make the comments correct, and approve as noted. And then he's, that's one less thing he'll have to search for.
Well, you asked my question, I'm going to ask, but you answer.
Any other questions, Council? Okay, consensus to proceed?
I think we're good.
I guess one last little item, I took the liberty of putting together a package that has been being handed out to all the developers and people who come in. But this will actually be emailed to our mail list and it will actually be available on the counter and mailed to every office. And this is basically what we just discussed. It's the breakdown of-
Will you provide that to Ms. Warren so she can email it to all of us?
Absolutely.
So that we're having-
Should it be put on the website in the-
It should be on their website.
Yeah, it will be. Anyplace that a developer might look, we'll make sure this gets posted.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank y'all. Appreciate the work y'all are doing. And I'm glad y'all are-
Busy.
Mr. Gilmore, is there anything under item three for items for review and discussion we need to address at this point? Thank you. Item four, council memorials. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vaughn Grace? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, just one quick thing. We'd like your concurrence, it's a standard practice we do, but we always come to you. We have an employee who is out on a worker's comp injury and that employee has gone through, is sick or annually leave. We would like your okay to advance 185 hours of sick leave. You may remember, we've done this before, as long as the employee's not on probation and that type of stuff. So, your concurrence, we'll proceed, you have a standard here.
Everybody okay? Thank you all. Stole it. Thank you. Item five, our department head item, it's from the Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. King?
Thank you.
From the Community Development. Anything further, Mr. Wood?
Nothing further, sir.
From Leisure Services, Mr. Dyke?
Saving Miami issue for tomorrow, sir.
Okay. And that's a good thing, right? The answer's yes. Fire Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Yes, sir, just to give you guys, Mayor and Council, an update. If you didn't get my email today, just so you're all aware that we did complete the investigation on the Perry FFA pig barn today and basically came to the conclusion that it is undetermined, the cause, but not ruling out the fact that it may have been a heat lamp that caused the fire. But it is, I mean, it was too much destruction to actually determine anything, so we've called it undetermined. Just to make everybody aware of that. And we did have a state fire investigator offer his assistance. He came in from Eastman, helped out Chief Stanton on the fire. Both of them agreed on that it was undetermined and that the cause could have been a heat lamp. So, that's what we determined. And Dr. Scott with the Board of Education has been notified as well as all of you folks through email. So, any questions, I can answer those, but that's pretty much it.
All right.